There it goes. Good. What was that? Oh, yeah. She's coming.
Oh, she is?
She's coming.
Okay.
Good. Be here in about two minutes. Oh, thank you.
Hi.
There's a paper up there behind the chair.
Hi. Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Do you want me to do a math?
No, you're good.
I'm excellent. I'll do it. Let's see, you have one.
Okay. What time is it? Seven oh eight. Get this from session.
The applicant is now at the bathroom.
We can start the meeting. Okay. So let's stand for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, verity, and justice for all. Can we wait for a minute? Yeah, take it. Go ahead. So we have one item on the agenda for today. Applicant is Ethra Palmer, also known as North 36 LLC, 36 North Street, application for site plan, section block and lot lot 107-2-63, RM zoning district, proposed use multi-family dwelling with public utilities. Provided site plan proposal includes demolition of existing single-family home and constructing two four-unit townhouses for a total of eight units on approximately 1.533 acres, a driveway, and a parking lot in the rear of the property. To confer with council. All favor?
All favor.
And you want to invite the engineer? You can invite John.
I would love.
Oh, yeah, so you set the time down?
Yeah.
I'm not sure. I'm waiting.
John, can we enter the court? Can we carry?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Can we enter the court, the stockman area?
Not that way, no, no. Go through there, here. Oh, wait a minute, they might still be in there, they were having a meeting.
It's dark in there.
Yeah, hang on. No, no, not that, I think from the back, I think they're having a meeting.
I didn't see them leaving, but I've got to meet anything.
They're still in there.
Okay.
Why don't you go into the office?
What was that?
Is it, well, ain't this fun?
Yeah.
This caught me by surprise.
I've never seen a planned board call for executive session. I'm just, over 20 years on and off of attending these meetings, I've yet to see a planned board call on executive session. I'm not saying they're not allowed to, I don't know, I haven't looked on New York State's governance website, it's just, for me, I find it highly irregular. You go to one of these meetings and I do.
Yeah. I'm trying to think of a time, I have to agree, I don't remember, I remember zoning board calling.
ZBAs, yes, because it's, they have to consult with, you know, what code is and stuff like that.
Yeah, I definitely, yeah, I can recall two ZBA municipalities that would do executive session, I can't remember of any.
Yeah, like I said, ZBAs, I'm familiar with that, they do, they try not to, but they do do it from time to time, especially if they're not clear on the code, and that's why they have counsel.
Right. Sure. So, well, this is going to be interesting. Yeah, tonight is a formal meeting, right?
Work session.
Oh, tonight's a work session?
Work session.
Yeah, I don't get to say squat.
Oh, it's, um...
There are no decisions made tonight or anything, as far as I know.
They can't, it's a work session.
Right, right.
So you didn't say what the resolve was with that?
It's a, oh, you mean with a Christian, oh goodness gracious, let's not talk about it right now.
Okay, and then realize you're recording.
Yeah. It was interesting. How's that, that's a prank, I can't answer it that way, it was interesting.
But we're finished and out of people. I have a neighbor who decided to plant bamboo several years ago.
Oh.
On the property line.
It does travel. Have bamboo, will travel.
And hasn't, doesn't go on my side of it to, to keep it a day. So it cost me, gee, five hundred or a thousand dollars a couple of years ago to have my landscaper cut back.
Oh, wow.
And now it's coming back again. And I don't think I should have to keep paying a landscaper to maintain his property.
I don't think I've ever seen bamboo grow. Is it in...
It's not, first of all, it's not really bamboo. It's a noxious weed that Americans call bamboo.
Okay.
It has...
Ah, okay, I didn't know that, okay.
Weasoms, shooters, it can go out as far as 18 feet.
18 feet?
18 feet. If you want to stop it from spreading, from what I read online, you have to put steel plates down 18 inches below grade to stop the roots from going in that direction. That's how noxious it is.
18 inches below grade with steel plates?
Yeah. That's how determined it is to grow.
Interesting.
Which is why, I mean, most municipalities have actually banned the planting of it.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, I know ivy grows, you know, obviously, you know.
Right, poison ivy goes everywhere.
It's going to learn something new every day.
I don't know if you can see it. There's 39 inches from the property line to my garage, you see that there, coming up?
Oh, yeah.
These is, that's the root system in my driveway.
And the green is?
It's the roots. Here, you can see, this is the side of my garage, I have a woodpile there, this is it just growing over it.
Well, it does move.
Yeah. And I mean, it grows, it can grow like a foot a day.
A foot?
A foot. You can go to sleep one night, it'll be like this.
Right.
The next day, it's up here.
I think we solved the energy problem.
You probably think you find a way to convert it to energy.
Convert it. If you have the name of that plant, send it to me, I'd be interested.
I have to go through, there's some horticultural websites that have the botany name for it.
So it's a relative of the bamboo, like a race of bamboo, so to speak, you know?
Yeah, there's a botany app you can actually get, that you can snap a picture of a plant, and it will help you identify it.
Interesting.
I'm not that much into horticulture.
Yeah, it's a relative of the bamboo plant, I would say.
Pardon?
It's a relative, you know, of the plant, yeah.
Yeah, it's in the family.
Yeah.
But I don't believe it's something like a panda would eat.
No, okay, well, they only eat the flowers, they don't eat the bamboo, so...
Yeah, this doesn't really flower.
Oh, no, okay.
It's just, it's a dirty, besides being a very aggressive grower, it sheds constantly. And on top of it, because he has it so tall, I mean, it's over 30 feet tall, you saw it.
Oh, you didn't go there yet and look at it?
It's over 30 feet tall, so when it snows, it comes over on our cars.
I'm about to take a trip.
It, one year, I have a propane tank, so, just off the property line from my pool, it knocked it over.
Huh.
Strong.
Well, it's the way, you know, it, because it grows in clusters, and then you get snow on top of it, and then snow on top of what it's...
I gotta go see this. I saw the pictures, I guess I don't do it justice.
Yeah, I think, is there the one that I took it? Wow, yeah, this is the bar, if you can see it.
Yeah, I got that one.
I sent that.
Wow, that's a lot.
Yeah.
And that's how formal the property is?
Um, you see this tree here?
Yes.
That's the property line. So this stuff right here is my property.
Wow.
Yeah. So it's just, you don't mind if somebody is gracious and, you know, "Oh, I'm sorry, let me take care of it," it's when they just, so what?
Good.
Well, that's what happens when you're too cheap to pay for a fence, and you want privacy.
A living, that's a living fence. It really is living, isn't it?
Yeah. Well, and on top of it now, there's, you know, there's so many birds in it, the cars now are constantly covered with bird poop.
No kidding, they really? Wow.
Oh, yeah. It's just, it's noxious at this point. Are there timelamps that are allowed to be in executive session?
Well, Stephanie, she has a handle on it.
Yeah, she seems to keep it, she's got a family, so she's not going to stay here all night.
I'm very impressed with her.
Did they complete their four hours of mandatory training yet?
I have no idea.
I know, I don't think Orange County's doing live trainings for those yet.
It's all on webinars, yeah, it's all, either webinars or you have to do it yourself.
You know, but some of the counties are bringing them back live now.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think they're going to have a live association and towns meeting in the fall.
Okay.
And that's a rumble.
Actually, yes, that's true. It's, uh, July.
July, they're having it?
Yeah, I heard, that I did hear.
That's good, they need to get back to them.
Well, I have to do, my training, as building inspector, I have to do my training online.
Yeah, well, that's a different one, that's more specific.
24 hours, yeah, so I take them on course online. Last year, I went up to, goodness gracious, I forgot what town it was, it was where I love Lucy was born, Desi Arnez, oh, not, Lucio Ball, whatever town that was, six-hour drive, it's a lot, something like that. But I was able to do them all in three days, I stayed at the hotel, it was good.
Yeah, well, what was it, two years ago, Orange County hosted a...
Kingston.
The, no, Orange County had the class to become a building inspector, I think about a few years ago.
Oh, they have them every year, yeah, they have them every year.
Yeah, well, no, they didn't have one last year.
Oh, right, I'm sorry, yeah, you're right, yeah, they haven't been doing, yeah, they keep sending you notices, but I don't know if they're actually doing them.
They had it at the fire center, I think, in Goshen.
Okay. They have three or four different areas, I think you're right, maybe a fire station, yeah, fire center.
They have the CCO every year, code enforcement?
You have to take 24 hours of training every year.
No, I mean, the exam is every year.
Oh, no, no, you just have to maintain your certification by getting, that you've done the 24 hours or more.
Right.
I usually do a lot more. We're waiting, they're all sitting together, and, what do we call it, executive session? So we're waiting, they're going to come back.
Oh, well, you didn't start yet?
Yeah, we're recording, we're online, yep.
Hi, so, good, how you doing, Corinne?
Just wanted to let you know what was going on.
Thank you for the update.
Corinne, grab another chair and put it up on the chair so you don't...
One of the towns are going to PEs for their code enforcement.
That's true.
They're going to what, what was that?
They're going to engineers, licensed engineers.
Oh, yeah, that's not a bad idea, yeah, that's... Well, also, yeah, exactly, yeah.
DM Park, I think, has three of them.
Well, they pay for it, too.
Yeah, that are engineers that are, that's their code enforcement.
Liberty, while I was working up there for a while, and they let go their building inspector, and then they found that they couldn't get anybody really good, and they got an engineer coming in. Well, that really raised the budget for the, yeah...
You know, sometimes it's good and sometimes it's not, you know, I know, from my point of view as a Realtor, whenever I get an engineer that wants to buy a house, I go, "Oh, jeez, jeez."
Is that carpentry outside here or in there? It's like, okay, what's that bow over there?
Well, we built one for, when I worked for Revia, we built one in Cornwall.
Yeah.
For a guy whose license plate says PhD, PhD, PhD.
He wants to be a PhD.
He has three PhDs, all in different forms of engineering, and he's a professional engineering witness throughout the world.
My God.
One of the sweetest people you will ever meet in your entire life, first of all. He's just a really kind, nice person, but man, did he know a lot of questions to ask.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
First of all, I give him credit for getting that many PhDs, that's, that's a lot of work.
It's incredible.
Well, I used to be a termite inspector also, I worked for, um, Ehrlich in Pennsylvania, and learned a lot doing that, that was before I started studying for building inspector and everything.
Yeah, they were also in Middletown, Ehrlich.
Oh, yeah, Ehrlich, Clover, yeah, there was Clover at one time, I worked for them, I worked for them.
Yeah.
Uh, so you do, it's amazing what you find when you inspect houses, I was a pretty good inspector, I checked everything. He went into the crawl spaces, you know?
It's amazing what you find when you sell them.
Yeah, well, yeah, yeah, it's a...
I actually have gone to houses with a six-foot level and held it up against the wall so people could see the bow of it.
Well, again, with the older homes, they were built with trees, I mean, you know...
Yeah, this wasn't an older home.
Oh, okay. I came across one home one time, they actually built it around a tree.
Oh, yeah.
And the tree had become, the building didn't look too bad, but it had become infested with powder post beetle, and the tree, the tree, the whole building was, it was worthless, it had to come down, there was no way to save it.
Listen, I've been into more by fair share where the foundations have a tree trunk, you know, as one of the supports and stuff.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Most interesting one I was in is out in Menesink, there is a, eight, 1760s, used to be a mill, a water mill.
Okay, yeah.
And you could go down into the basement and still see all the...
The wheels and cogs and everything, oh, that would be cool, so cool, that's, yeah...
Unfortunately, though, for that one, the whole foundation needs to be rebuilt.
Oh, boy.
Because they put a road like right next to the entrance, and the vibrations have just been moving it along, so to speak.
Yeah, yeah. It's amazing you see the ancient technologies, it's just so incredible.
Oh, the things, like you said, you have to crawl spaces, you're like, "Why did they do that?"
I've seen the first, second floors that were being held up by the third floor with, with rods coming down all, there's one in Goshen like that, I worked for Goshen, too. It's one of the restaurants, I forget what it is now, Office 17M, just past the exercise place on the right-hand side of the...
By the, um, hacienda?
Hacienda, yeah, yeah, that, that, that second floor, I believe it was, was actually supported by, by the upper floor on that, there's like a third level, which he turned into an apartment, it had the rods coming, it was additional support.
Right.
I'd never seen anything like that before. Neil, he's my boss over in Goshen.
Yeah, I know who Neil is.
Yeah, and he says, "Watch this," he brought me and he sold me this, they're going back like 10 years ago. They did a nice job on that, that old building. It's a little restaurant, beautiful, even the basement area.
And it is scary when I sit there and I go on home inspections, and I know more about construction than the home inspector.
Oh, yeah, no, home, yeah, and then, you know, some of them aren't very good either, they play the percentages, ah, so if it needs something, we'll come back and fix it, you know, like...
I had one telling somebody, because there was too long of a span...
Yeah.
On the floor joists, saying, "Oh, well, you should put in, you know, a steel field column," I said, "You can't just put that in," I said, "You have to do..."
Loads of point loading, yeah, of course, yeah.
Yeah, I said, "You have to do, you know, a six-inch square of 2,000 psi concrete underneath there," and he's going, well, he goes to them, he goes, "Yeah, that's really the right way to do it, but I'd be happy if you just put one in," and I'm like, "You can't make up that form of stupid."
Yeah, there's a lot, there's a lot of stuff.
You're telling somebody spent $300 on a concrete field lolly column, but you're not telling them the right way it should be installed. That's what I forgot to do today, get to your store.
I dare you.
She makes excellent keys. I have no toe with the keys she makes, I go to Home Depot, I went there three times, I had three bad keys, I wouldn't work.
No, I need red tomato steak, but they're getting too big, and I only have two out of my three steaks.
Hello.
Hi.
Hey, Corinne, how are you?
Just wondering who that gorgeous woman was standing there. Hi, how are you?
Hey, girl, how you doing?
Me too.
All right.
What's up, John?
Oh, sure.
Would you like to make a motion that we terminate the executive session? Your turn?
Second. Thank you for your patience, would you like to present?
Uh, sure, we were happy to present at the last meeting, and took the comments from the planning board, and incorporated it into our latest submission, so that those revisions included information regarding the EAF, and included information regarding the site with the letter from DEC, and then it also included revising the site plan to incorporate parking for visitors along the end of the drive, and relocating dumpster over to one side to allow access for plowing and for trucks, or garbage disposal, things of that nature. It was our intent that once these revisions were made, we would be able to go to the zoning board and pursue the variance, so that we could also continue on with the design process.
Has the subdivision been eliminated?
Yes.
So there's more now for garbage, and emergency vehicles will be able to get in and out?
Yes.
And the guest parking is eight spots?
Yes, figure one per unit.
David, one thing that I noticed when I reviewed your revised documents is that the application, along with the short EAF, and the actual site plan still saves subdivision, so I think there's some confusion in that regard?
Oh, that must be obviously an oversight in all part. No, we reviewed the thought of removing the subdivision line, since the project now is not based on two individual lot areas, it's based on 10,000 square feet of lot area per unit, so now that we have three, close to the possibility of eight units requiring the variance, have been no need to subdivide the lot into two, the land into two separate lots.
So there is, there was a recent, somewhat recent now, actually now, maybe not so recent, but in 2020, there was a determination on another project in the village with regard to the code saying multiple dwelling, and there is a question actually in front of the ZBA now, which is determining whether or not multiple dwelling permits...